Good evening and welcome to the City Council Conference Committee Meeting of May 28, 2019. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is the update on the progress of the Memorandum of Understanding regarding the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District and Analysis of Sites for Norman Forward Projects. And Catherine Walker, our City Attorney, will give the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. We're having technical difficulties, so we're going to go a little old school with our paper here. I've got in here just a couple of background slides, and this is what we went over last time, a couple of weeks ago when we gave the update, and you all have lived a lot of this, so you know. But the TIF was created back in 2006. It included project costs up to $54.725 million to be funded via tax increment financing, so being funded by sales tax and EBITDA tax generated within that district. It included five project plan components: traffic and roadway improvements, conference center, and cultural facilities, Legacy Park, Lifestyle Center, and Economic Element. And it's been implemented over time with a series of contracts that have been called development agreements primarily, but also a financing agreement, operating agreement. And these are agreements that run the gamut, really, addressing all of these different project components. And so over the last six months or so, council has been asking, how can we end the TIF early and get all of that sales tax revenue back into the general fund so that it's no longer diverted to the TIF fund? And so staff has been working with representatives of the developer, UTC, and the OU Foundation, or U N P, you'll see, called throughout, to figure out how to come to some agreement about how this can be ended early and not be in violation of any contracts. And so we're dealing with about $15 to $17 million available by June 30 for project costs, and there's about $25 million available or remaining in authorized project costs. We did the MOU back in March, and we've been working towards the goal of a June 30 end date ever since. So so far, we've started the audit. We talked last time about identification of site for Norman, of the site for the Norman Forward Projects. This includes the multi-sport and the indoor aquatics center, and then I'll give you an update on the negotiations. As I told you last time, ADG has been engaged to develop a comparison of the North Bay site, the UTC site, which is east of 24th, south of Rock Creek Road, and then the NEDC site, which would be east of 24th, north of Rock Creek Road, to help you all analyze those sites. And I gave you a summary of their preliminary report last time, a couple of weeks ago, but they're here to give you a little more detailed report. And so I'm going to turn it over to Leslie with ADG to give you that information, and then we'll get back to an update on the negotiations.
Good evening. Thank you again, Catherine, Mayor, Council, and staff. You'll see in your packet two items. The first is a PowerPoint. That was probably a couple of slides too long, so the not having technology may work in our favor. And then the second is a copy of our final memo. Being tasked with this comparative site analysis, I think, is a really nice way for all of you as the city to get your arms around the data. You'll notice in there, there's not a lot of talk about specific numbers or things like that that are often discussed during these discussions. What we tried to do, attempted to do, was to compare things apples to apples. So all things being equal, let's talk about site amenities. All things being equal, let's talk about services. So this was a collaborative effort in our firm. Doing most of the presenting tonight will be Jason Cotton, Director of Program Management. And then the memo is also thanks in great part to A.J. Kirkpatrick, our Director of Urban Planning. So I'll turn it over to Jason, and then we're all here if you have any questions.
Good evening, everyone. So I've been asked to keep this super brief, and so I'm going to go through these slides pretty quick and just hit the high points. So as we said in the memo, there was a 2013 preliminary study that was done, and that kind of set the tone for everything that's described in the memo. The memo, the preliminary study spoke a lot to what the demographics were of the facility. So the intended use of the facility was to not only serve city Norman residents, but also a much larger, almost like a regional type area. And so the study further went on, identified some needs in terms of indoor facilities. I think it identified four basketball courts, four volleyball courts, a competitive pool. So these are all the things that we included, kind of, as we looked at the three sites. There was also some things in the preliminary study that spoke to some outdoor facilities, which of course are addressed by separate Norman Forward Projects. So fast forward about four years, there was a 2017 programming study that was done by ADG, and so you'll see in your slides, there's some mention of what those, that study resulted in. So roughly a 39,000 square foot program for the indoor aquatic facility, about a 70,000 square foot program for the indoor multi-sport facility. ADG has gone through some calculations. We think that your parking requirements are somewhere between 340 and 600 spaces. We've also looked at just preliminary footprints and what a parking facility of that size would need in terms of space and size, and we think your acreage needs are somewhere between 12 and 16 acres. So I know in talking with staff, they think the parking requirements are up in at that range, so possibly 500 to 600 spaces. Ideally, we would try to find a location where the 500 to 600 spaces is only going to be required during, infrequently during large events, that peak requirement. And so possibly overflow parking at adjacent off-street parking facilities might need to be considered. So the three sites that we considered, you guys will know, Site One, which is a U N P North of Rock Creek Road, it's about 12 acres, previously platted. Site Two, which is the U N P South site, which is south of Rock Creek Road, is about 18 acres of unplanted property. And then Site Three was the North Bay facility, it's about 13 and a half acres. Some things we noticed about Site Three, there's, existing utility service appears to be somewhat limited. Most of that area, as far as we can tell, appears to be served by University of Oklahoma infrastructure. There's also an existing hangar building on the property that you guys are aware of, and so that may need to remain with my next site, design was a little bit challenging. So the scoring methodology, basically what we did is we scored each site, basically, in Site Four assessment categories. So they were site considerations, urban impact, access considerations, and financial considerations. We applied some weighting factors into one of these categories based on input from staff. And so inside of these categories, and you'll see the weighting factors there on the slide, but inside these categories are basically 24 different assessment points for each site. And so each assessment point gets a score of one to three, and you basically just score each site by summoning scores. And so the lowest score a site could potentially receive would be 51, the highest score would be about 153. So you'll notice on the memo, we grade out, there's one of the assessment points that speaks to an operator, operator perspective, and so we grade that out because that's not something that we can really score right now because of all that. And so the scores that we're reporting in the memo, and you hear the season, they don't take into consideration, considerations from the perspective of the operator. So the North Side scored a 95, U N P North Side, so this is the one that's North of Rock Creek Road, Site One, received a score of 95. Some of the victims, the big takeaways from that, we feel like it has limited design flexibility. It's a relatively constrained site. There are also some utility relocations that need to be addressed if we decide to use that site. There's little to no room for expansion. We've looked at the site in terms of scale, the building footprints, the 2017 programming study, the acres of parking, and it just seems like it's going to be really tight. And so that were some of our big takeaways for the Site One. Site Two, the U N P South Side, as I said, it's about 18 acres. We realize the city has no intention of, or anticipation of purchasing all 18 acres. We do feel like it offers a lot of design flexibility. There's also some potential synergies with Embassy Suites facilities in the south, not only in that the two land uses are somewhat synergistic, but also there's a lot of off-street parking facilities to the, of the Embassy Suites that could potentially be used by this facility whenever that peak parking demand is required. Site Three, the North Bay site, received a total score of about 84, and so for that side, some key takeaways that we want to bring to the group, there's some additional utility infrastructure that we feel like would be required. And so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. The fact that the hangar may potentially remain is going to possibly present some design challenges. Also, Site Three, North Bay side, is somewhat isolated from land uses that we think that are kind of visitor-focused. And so with the thought that this facility is intended to be used by not only city Norman residents, but also people that come into the city Norman from the region, it seems to make sense to have the facility located at a close proximity to things like lodge and retail and restaurants. And so we took that into consideration. So thanks to all of that, we kind of reached a recommendation, we feel like Site Two is probably the best, and we're qualified at, with the fact that it would be good to possibly get input from your operator. It's most flexible from a design perspective. It seems clear that there's sufficient room for not only the program that's anticipated with Norman Forward, but possibly future expansion should the city ever decide to do that in the future. The synergies that I mentioned before with Embassy Suites, the overflow parking and the lodge, and obviously that would be next door, synergies with adjacent each other dining, and then for that side in particular, the site development costs appear to be relatively smaller. So I'm sorry to go through that so fast, but that's kind of the high point, so I'll just open it up to questions.
So on the North Base, considering that we originally were looking at, I'm just trying to remember how many acres it was, we were originally looking at having all three facilities there. If we left the hangar, because that's something we didn't want to get into, how many acres without the senior citizen center would those two facilities have?
We added two acres to that parcel that we purchased to accommodate the senior center. So I think when you go and measure out the hangar, I think that's about two acres or so, at least on our G I S map.
So you'd need all of the land.
We would be down to 12, back down to 12 acres, which is what we think we need for the two facilities, other than the shared parking issue that Jason mentioned.
So we'd still need about the same amount of money?
Yeah, we might could work around the hangar, but it would be challenging.
Okay. Councilmember Scott.
I have a couple of questions. I'm wondering, so is this a standard, this is just for my, for information, like, is this a standard you guys use to, whenever you go to any site, or is it kind of designed for us in here in Norman, in these sites specifically?
We use this type of approach.
Okay.
For any type of project that we do like this, I will say that we kind of custom tailored to the assessment points, like, we were really trying to hit on what we felt like was critical for the city of Norman and for this project. Does that answer your question?
That does, yeah, that helps. And then just for me, when we're talking about U N P location one, that's the NEDC land, and then the location two, the Rock Creek.
By Embassy Suites.
By Embassy Suites. And so that's the one that would need the road development on that area on Rock Creek Road, correct? It would need to be.
An extension.
An extension, yeah, possibly. Okay. And then which one of these was the one, and this is my last of the follow-ups of the series.
Over here.
Which is the site that there was potential for donated land? There was a discussion about that? It was location two.
Yeah, location two. That's where in the prior development agreement, they had agreed to donate a couple of acres and then sell additional acreage for a lower price.
If we needed it, so then, okay, I lied, I'm sorry. This is another question then. So if we're talking about the sites themselves would take up two acres, they would donate two acres, and then we could buy whatever additional we needed for expansion, is that right?
That's a possibility, but that's not what I have proposed, and I'll get to that in just a minute.
Okay, and then I'll let you get to that then. That's all.
Councilmember Catherine.
So just kind of to clarify, your financial considerations section, you don't really have dollar numbers there. Wouldn't that be kind of a factor in there, if one's $10 million and one's $1 million? Wouldn't that kind of a?
So I'll tell you the way that we.
How do we adjust for that?
Okay, so the way that we approached this, I will say that we reached out to a cost estimator to try to put some numbers to this project. The comments that we got back is it was, it would be really, really tough for him to do that, for them to do that without having things like a site plan and things to base their cost estimate off of. So I think what we looked at, and you have to remember that this is a comparative site analysis, so it's not so much the number as how the numbers might compare to one another. And so we know for a fact that the North Bay side is going to have additional utility infrastructure costs that the other two sites will not. So it's not so much that we don't, to your point, the specific number is not the problem, we know that the North Bay side, whatever the number is, is going to be that plus a couple of million dollars, is kind of what I think we're trying to drive home with the financial consideration comparison. Does that make sense?
To a certain extent, I mean, but if those additional costs are a couple hundred thousand dollars, it may be insignificant, or, you know, to actually move the, versus this is too many dollars additional cost to one site, but they're all about the same, not counting the structures, because that's because the structure may be the same regardless of where you put it, it's really the.
Our understanding was that this was part of just sort of the larger data gathering effort. So obviously, if numbers come in higher or lower, or something catches you by surprise and really impacts a location, that should be taken into consideration as part of the whole picture, but this is just this type of analysis to help get you where you need to go without having exact numbers yet. So your point is well taken, and the answer is yes, all of the above. So you would take the site analysis, and then you take whatever data comes in about cost and get the full picture. Neither of these separately give you the full picture, it's the numbers that you may get in the future and this data together.
So if all three of these came in and scored about the same, then it would really just be price.
Right.
But what you're saying is if.
If you guys value.
If Site Three is 84 versus 131, what, 50 points?
Right. If council were to decide that there were two or three driving priorities, and those were the key issues, you could make that decision with this data, but it wouldn't necessarily match the analysis based on your priority.
I mean, move it a little bit, but move it enough to become a starting point of what our analysis is, in terms of financial, whether it's in the budget, if you afford it, and those types of things.
AJ, do you have anything to add based on your experience?
I want to be clear, are you asking about acquisition costs or cost of the site ranking?
Both.
So there appears two different line items, I want to make that clear, amongst the several items that we looked at. There was a. Three under site considerations, his ability to acquire site, and you'll note that the sites rank 2, 2, 3, so they're fairly close already. But then also, under financial considerations, we have land assembly and site prep construction costs.
But you don't know what those numbers are, so. But how you rank it?
To the best of our ability right now with information.
About what you think they're going to be, okay. So it's kind of in there, but not.
Yeah.
So what's the opportunity cost section there? You said, you know, the last line, there's opportunity costs, alternative land uses. I mean, we don't own any of those lands, so it's not really, it's opportunity cost to us. How do we factor those in?
Basically, what we're trying to capture there is, are there other land uses that were just like anyone of these three sites that the site would be better suited for? So like in the example of North Bay's property, that, that site scores very high, or higher in opportunity cost, because there's not a lot of other land uses that the city of Norman.
Use that for.
That would potentially use that for. So the U N P North and South, or the NEDC, and the other, I can't remember, UTC. There's potentially other land uses that could consume that property and use it, you know, maybe a hotel or a restaurant and retail. And so that's, that's kind of what we're trying to capture, I think.
That may be better just to city's bottom line financially.
Got you.
Are there questions? Got my question. Okay. Councilmember.
I guess following up on what Robert was saying, on the site prep construction costs, do we know whether or not there's going to have to be any traffic? Has there been a traffic study done on either of the North Park sites?
Not for these particular uses. My understanding is that, the thought is that particularly on the UTC site, the traffic generated from these Norman Forward projects would not be any greater than what's already been studied and planned for, which is commercial development.
Probably less, wouldn't it, because of the time?
Right, it'll be.
Nighttime weekends as opposed to.
So we're not envisioning any additional road extensions or signals having to be installed?
I don't think so. I think the access would be off of either, depending on the site, Rock Creek or off Corporate Center Drive, which are both signalized already.
Well, the schematic I thought I saw on this one had the Norman Forward properties hugged behind the Rock Creek Road, where you have to access it, well, off of 24th Street, where you have to access it off of Rock Creek Road, and that road managed to be extended.
Yeah.
Yes, it would have to be, depending on where they are, it would have to be extended, but it's, it's something like 100 feet, something like that. It's not, not a huge extension.
I'm just wondering, was that part of the site prep cost that ADG was made aware of when they considered?
Yeah, I think.
Road extension.
I mean, we felt like, I think there's some language in the memo that speaks to about $2.1 million in the budget for the project, and so we didn't have to hop in here on this area. Remind me what, that $2.1 million, that has to be traffic reasons in as well, right? What we initially anticipated for potentially the North Bay side, when we originally conceived Norman Forward being on North Bay, so we plugged in a number of around 2.1 million trap, or public infrastructure numbers for the improvements in that area.
How much road? There was quite a bit of roadwork to be done on North.
Road widening, utilities.
Like, two things, Mayor, it was a new traffic signal at Lexington and Flood, and it was really a replacement of Lexington Drive from Flood into the site. Widening replacement.
Was it the extension of Berry Road?
An extension of Berry Road, thank you. Also up to Lexington, so you can get it to the site from either Robinson Street or Flood Street.
Yeah, I thought there was quite a bit of.
And that was for the North Bay site?
That's correct, that's for the North Bay site.
So the site preparation cost, the budget that we're referring to, should be sufficient for all three sites then?
Certainly would be less for the North Bay sites, for the University of Norman Park sites, I'm sorry.
I have one quick question.
All right, Councilmember Bearman.
How did you determine the weighting factors?
That was based on internal conversations, again, all the research that we did prior to doing this analysis. And, you know, obviously Wesley has been involved in here for a long time. So based on some kind of internal discussions and also input from staff on what we felt like were the most critical things. So one of the things, you know, you can see like in the four buckets, you know, the financial considerations down at the bottom has got one of the higher weighting factors, and that, as an example, that reflects the fact that we feel like from a budget perspective, it's really important that we minimize site development costs. And so it was based primarily on internal discussions and conversations with staff as well.
I believe the rankings remained the same, though, whether they were weighted or not? If we just looked at a raw score.
That's a good point. The first time that we did it, we left all the weighting factors as one, and that draft that was put together, we didn't really feel like after discussing with staff that it really accurately reflected what rest was most critical in selecting a site. And again, you know, I can tell you that I've gone through projects like this using weighting factors, and, I mean, you could probably spend an hour just talking about what's the appropriate weighting factor for each one of these. I would just encourage, or I guess I would remind the group, that this is kind of a qualitative type, or, yeah, qualitative type comparison, it's not really quantitative, or, you know, we're trying to like, get kind of a 30,000-foot view of which one of these sites seems to be most appropriate, so.
Councilmember Scott.
I have one last thing, and I've said it, I said it at the last meeting we had, which is whichever site we choose, I worry about Robinson, especially with the delay that we're going to experience, and so if we can work with ODOT, I don't know if it would cost us money, or if they would just like in-kind donate a sign off of the highway to say, get off at Tecumseh, so to access these sites. That's, I just want to make that abundantly clear that I, that is a desire, and so I'm stating it now, and I'll state it probably again. So I don't know if that's an extra cost that we need to factor in, but not much, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay, so moving on through the different negotiation points, one of the things we were instructed to do was to work with the public schools to determine the budget impact on the schools that are beginning to tip early, address the remaining authorized projects, and then again, we're struggling with what to do with the $15 million, 15 to 17 million we think will be available for $25 million worth of project cost. So the first one I want to talk about, and I want to give you guys as much details as possible on this, is traffic and roadway. And so you see in this, on this slide, the amounts for the remaining contemplated TIF-funded traffic and roadway improvements. And so these numbers generally come from Development Agreement Number Five, which were estimated at that time by an updated T I A, I believe, Traffic Impact Analysis. The Robinson project, that has been increased, that was increased in the MOU because we know that that one's going to require a little bit more money. Then we, I've added a 10% contingency just to give us a little more room to get these projects funded and finalized. So we've got a little over $5 million for traffic and roadway improvements. Legacy Park, our remaining obligations are about $75,000 in business improvement district obligations, and then the Legacy Park surface parking project, you might recall, $175,000 was allocated for that, I think in Amendment Number One to Development Agreement Number Five, and that, I believe, is underbid at this time. Some of the funds contributed to the business improvement district thus far, they're all wrapped into Fund 57, which is where we're getting that 15 to 17 million dollar estimate, and so I'm still trying to figure out how much of that has not been spent and should be allocated out of this 15 to 17 million dollars. This did include funding in the, for public art in the park of one and a half million dollars, and that is being dropped under the current proposal. Norman Forward Projects will have a pretty big art component, given the size of those budgets, and so there will be art, and there's still the opportunity for the Arts in Public Places program to fund art in the park at some point in the future. And then the funding for enhanced landscaping is being dropped as well, and that was really to provide landscaping over and above what's already being done, and that's just never moved forward. On the economic development component, there's about $3.4 million left in this allocation. This is one of the project costs I've been protective of. It's also the most complex piece of the puzzle because there, there was a transaction where NEDC bought 60 acres from U N P, and there were a lot, there was a lot of give and take in those negotiations. They got that land for a really reduced price, but part of that bargain included some repurchase and cure rights for U N P. And so trying to figure out what, what can be done about those rights, because they have a lot of value for U N P, is just taking a little bit longer to kind of figure out, you know, how to settle that. There's also a approval requirement for a qualified user, so you can't just develop that land for anything, it can't be for speculative or speculative office buildings or anything like that, and it needs to be for quality job employers. The TIF authority does have a right to prepay that debt or purchase the debt, and so that's an option for us, but that doesn't really address the land and the development deadlines that are, that are pending.
Councilmember Scott. Oh, Councilmember Carter.
I'm sorry, I turned this way, I couldn't see you.
Just when you're finished, I have a question.
With this slide? Okay. And then we have Development Agreement Number Six, where we are obligated to provide an incentive for job growth at Immuno Micrologics, ME, and that money goes to NEDC. So we're, we're working to try and get all those pieces together. The loan documents are 200 pages long, I guess, probably 200 or 300.
How much is that incentive?
It was a max of 770,000. We have about 698,000 left. I have not figured out what the incentive for this year would be yet, for this past year.
So we're maybe 100,000 off or something.
We've only paid them, I think, 70,000.
But we have 600,000.
We are obligated to pay up to that amount.
Oh, we don't have that set aside.
We do, we do, but that's part of this 3.4 million.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the 3.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to get clear in my mind, so NEDC purchased the land from U N P, not UTC.
Right.
And U N P is a wholly owned subsidiary of the U Foundation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so at some point, 2023, if I remember correctly, what, what's the trigger for, I'm going to try to use the word default or repossession, or U N P recapturing this land? What's the trigger for that?
It's either default to, so they don't make the payments on the loan, or it is failure to develop it, and I think the timeframe is 10 years from the date of the closing, but develop it for economic development jobs.
Correct all the parameters of those, yeah.
Right.
And so then in terms of defaulting, NEDC is a partnership, I guess, between four entities, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so now does the city, is the city solely responsible for that? Okay. And so now, does the city, is the city solely responsible for that? Did they, did we co-sign this note?
We provided funds for security to pay, and it's been used to make interest payments up to this point. Those funds have now been exhausted. We have a right to prepay the debt and purchase the debt, but it's not an obligation.
Okay. And then the interest payments that we've been making, have those been interest payments that have come out of the general fund or out of the TIF?
No, it's out of that TIF Economic Development Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next component is cultural facility, which in the project plan amendment draft I've got going, I'm renaming recreation facilities since we never really did figure out what a cultural facility is. And recreation facility describes it better. This is the Norman Forward projects. The city would build what's estimated to be 22 and a half million dollars in Norman Forward facilities. So the indoor competitive pool and the multi-sport, it would be located on the U T C property. So the, the site identified by ADG and the site you all said you preferred last time we talked about this. And the 12 acres would be donated in exchange for release of the Lifestyle Center penalties under the latest proposal. And then it provides another $2 million to supplement the construction of those Norman Forward projects. The keep NPS whole directive, there have been a number of emails back and forth, and I do not understand the sinking fund. I'm not going to pretend to understand it, but I do know that Brenda Burkett, you know, that is her job, is the CFO for the public schools.
It's not.
But I know that's been part of the discussion. But she says that, that the impact to their funding from the TIF, if it's ended early, is about 700,000 a year. So if we capture the, the ad valorem revenues from the assessments from this year, that'd be paid next year, but they've been assessed already by the time the TIF is ended. If we capture that, then that leaves us with about six months' worth of, of ad valorem that would not have been, that would have been collected had the TIF not been ended early. And I say six months because the TIF would have ended on its own, just by virtue of having enough revenue to cover all the project costs in about a year and a half. So that's about half from now or a year and a half from July 1st. Well, from July 1st, I think.
From July 1st.
Yeah. So that represents that six month number. And so the way I've got it in the proposal right now is it would be set aside to offset anticipated annual contributions by the public schools to operate the Indoor Aquatic Center. They were always anticipated to participate at about 50,000 a year. So this would offset that payment for about seven years and give them time to plan for that, while at the same time giving them the benefit of those funds they would have otherwise received by virtue of the TIF.
Catherine?
Yes. Councilmember Higman.
I have a question on this slide. You indicated $2 million construction supplement. Would that be taking some of the TIF money that was identified for a cultural facility to go towards these two Norman Forward facilities?
Yes.
Has there been any discussion about how that money would be split between those two projects?
No, we don't have any design firms hired yet for those projects. We are interviewing them, I think, the week of June 12th, 12th through the 14th, somewhere around there. So we don't know how those costs will shake out yet in terms of, you know, design and final construction. So that will just supplement the overall budgets. And then as they come in, I think we'll do CMAR on those as well. And we'll be able to manage that and just have that extra funding for those projects.
Okay. And I'm, and I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that, or I'm not comfortable with that. But I am confused because according to the contractor that we're paying to do an apple-to-apple site comparison, it says financial considerations, potential need for additional non-Norman Forward funds, which I'd assume these are non-Norman Forward funds, that the South Rock Creek location, the one that we're talking about, the one they say should be our preferred one, it got a three score. And I think three means it's the best, right?
Right. And so.
So if the South Park, if the South Rock Creek, if the South U N P site got a three for not needing additional non-Norman Forward funds, but we're giving them $2 million potentially from the TIF, those seem to be inconsistent positions. And the North Bay one got a one, which I'm not sure where North Bay site would get other non, non-Norman Forward funds to supplement those projects. So did we, were they not aware of this?
This is really just an attempt to get some additional funding for the construction of the projects. What they were looking at was the land assembly, land acquisition, getting those sites shovel-ready. What I'm looking at is just construction. So we don't need under this proposal, any additional funding to purchase the property, because under this proposal, it would be donated. We would instead use that funding to ensure that these projects can be built the way they were envisioned.
Well, then, under site preparation, construction costs, they also gave a three to the South Rock Creek Road location, saying sufficient due diligence has been conducted on the site to establish that no hidden costs, and those costs are within existing project budget. But we're adding, potentially proposing to add $2 million to the project budget. I'm just, it seems this analysis is inconsistent with what we're proposing to actually do. I mean, if we have an extra $2 million, I would be fine giving that to the seniors if we're going to have money, extra money in Norman Forward, if there is, if there is space at the reef site to ensure that they get the wellness center that they want, because I've heard that there's a funding issue in getting them the wellness center that they want, those, those amenities. So, I mean, I'm just a little bit confused because I'm not sure how ADG can give them a three when the same on-site preparation costs, no need for other non-Norman Forward funds, when we're talking about giving them $2 million of non-Norman Forward funds. Like I said, and I'm not saying that's a good or bad thing. I, I'm just, I need to think about that. But there does seem to me to be a fundamental disconnect.
Well, again, this is not really dealing with this, supplements, not necessarily needed funds to develop the property. This is just to supplement the construction in case the design results in higher costs.
I think it also should be pointed out that this is part of the negotiations. We know they want the aquatic center and the, and multi-sports center in the U N P because they believe that will be a regional draw. So I think they're more likely to want to give the $2 million for construction there than have it offsite somewhere. And Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Castleberry.
Okay. So the way I understand it, we really have three different benchmarks in terms of cost. We have site acquisition costs, we have site improvement costs, and we actually have building construction costs. So the $2 million construction supplement is for the construction of the two facilities, correct?
Yes.
So that would honestly apply to any of the three locations theoretically, correct?
Well, because it's, it's TIF funds, it could apply to anywhere in, certainly the U N P property or the U T C. I think we'll get some pushback if it's outside of the increment district.
But I mean, what we're, what we're identifying, it seems like to me, is about a $2 million. Is the total cost 22.5 plus two?
Yes.
Okay. So what we, what we had initially budgeted for these two projects was 22.5. What we're anticipating that their costs are going to be is 24.5.
I mean, we don't, we don't have it designed.
We don't know. I'm just, but I'm just saying, so what you, which I applaud your effort here in, in building in basically two extra million dollars that will allow us to build these facilities to what the public's expectations might be of those facilities. And so in terms of the actually acquisition costs, you're saying the acquisition cost of the land is zero.
Yeah.
So in terms of now comparing dollars to dollars, like Robert was bringing up earlier, we would have to purchase the North Bay's property, the U N P, the NEDC property.
We have to purchase.
That's a purchase, right?
We have to purchase.
That's a purchase. This is free. So that's a pretty strong multiplier in my mind of this site being a very good site. Thank you.
Okay. Now, maybe the, I said the economic development piece was the most complex piece, but the town center piece is not easy either. We called it a lifestyle center for years and years.
Bless you, Catherine. The whole thing has been very difficult. And you have done an amazing job so far.
Oh, well, we'll see if we can get a deal.
These are negotiating points.
Yeah.
I mean, this is not.
This is not the final deal.
These are the things we're talking about.
This is.
The ADG deal was, it doesn't matter what happens on here. I think those are, that's a clear.
Right.
Whether you get that $2 million or not, that $2 million would not have affected AGD's approach to how they did the analysis.
Because they weren't looking at what the land cost was going to be, because they didn't know what it meant.
If we get $2 million in this, that frees up $2 million in Norman Forward.
It could.
To either go, to either go towards those projects, or senior center, or another, I mean, it's all one bucket. Norman Forward's a bucket. I mean, you've got those budgets, and so it would put that in there. It would reduce the, you also have the savings potentially from the utilities and the site preparation. So I think all those things.
So the town center, and this is just basically my most recent term sheet that I sent to the other parties. So it is not the final deal, and I anticipate there will be some changes. But I, I think hopefully it's a good framework to move forward on, and it gets us closer to finalizing this. So Lifestyle Centers aren't being built anymore. We all know this. So this one, I'm now calling the Town Center with retail and entertainment uses. If you look at big retail developments around the country, because of how retail's changed, it's all tied to entertainment and experiences that you cannot get online. And so you have entertainment mixed with, with retail. You don't have big box stores generally anymore. And so a lot of this is trying to address that change in, in retail. U T C wants some assurance that they will be able to access these funds in exchange for less available funding. Their original allocation was eight and a quarter million. That's not what we're proposing at all. So we've been working on criteria that would allow them some assured access to the funds. You know, what would you have to do to be able to say, I can get, can access those funds? Right now, the situation they're in is we have some minimum criteria before they can even ask for those funds from council. And you all might say no. So given that, that we're trying to end the TIF early, and it's not the most popular structure in town, they want some assurance. So these are the criteria we're kind of working off now. It would have to be in the area designated as the Lifestyle Center, and that is the area that was designated, I think Amendment Number One to Development Agreement Number Five. So it's basically south of the hotels, between Crest and the hotels. It must be to support a user that is not already in Norman. You'll recall, maybe in the last development agreement, I think it was, we raised the performance measures for retail users from 125 to 300 per square foot. We've pulled some data on retail sales per square foot, and they still seem to be pretty good numbers, given our demographics. But $300 per square foot for stores larger than 10,000 square feet, and 400 per square foot for stores smaller than 10,000 square feet. And it has to be demonstrated based on past performance in communities with similar demographics. And if it's an entertainment user, sales per square foot don't really work as well with entertainment. But it must present an entertainment option unique to Norman. So something that we don't already have. It must incorporate urban design, walkability and connectivity. And the user for which the funds are being requested must either purchase land or sign a lease of at least three years. They have to meet all of these. If they don't meet all of these, and they still want to ask for incentives, then they need to do a development agreement, and that needs to come to council. The authorization to use these funds for Lifestyle Center incentives or Town Center incentives expires June 30th, 2026. After that, those funds can be allocated to another project cost, or, or some other purpose. So that is what we've been working on there, trying to address our desire to not give as much money, and our desire to have some assurance that whatever they, whatever's allocated, they have the opportunity to actually get. And that one is, is not an easy pill for our community, I recognize. But I think it's, it's, it's something that helps get us to the finish line.
We, we keep the money that we hold.
We would hold on to it, yeah.
We hold on to the money.
They would have to come forward with the proposal.
Councilmember Carter.
Ms. Walker, the $50 question. In our original agreement, it was 8.25 million. We're going to make these considerations for them take, having access to a lesser amount, which is going to be.
I didn't put it in there because we're still trying to figure out some of this Legacy Park piece. And I was trying to leave a little bit open for the recreation facility. But right now, it's around four and a half to five million. So cutting about three and a half million or so off of that allocation. So the last slide is just one you saw last time too, and that you all know well. The MOU will terminate on June 30th unless we agree to an extension. It can be terminated early if we determine that further discussions will be fruitless. And again, I don't think we've reached an impasse. I, I think having this meeting was helpful. We had a really good phone conference Friday, and just because of the holiday and conferences that they were all in last week in Vegas for retail, the retail conference they go to. We haven't been able to get written feedback on this. But I think I will get that by the end of this week, and I'll have a really good idea of how close we are.
So the, the last bullet point, the entire PP amendment process, if it cannot be completed, the parties are willing to make all the amendments and the agreements we've agreed to up to that point, the tax increment goes away.
Yes.
And then we just have to finalize the, whatever amendments are left.
Right. Part of the project plan amendment process requires review by a statutory review committee. I don't know how long it will take the committee to review these and, and either recommend or not recommend them. If it's one meeting, this can go a little bit quicker, but you do have to have a couple of public hearings on them. So some of that timeline's a little bit out of our control, even under the best of circumstances. So if it doesn't get done by June 30th, completely done, I, you know, I think it'll be done in July, maybe early August, depending on how our meeting schedule works out. But it can all be made retroactive to end the increment June 30th, as council directed.
Okay. That's good. All right. Councilmember Castleberry.
So to be clear, I guess this is a question for you and a question for Anthony. When you get your July sales tax report, are you going to allocate any money to the TIF?
It depends on what council tells me to do.
Well, I mean, if our understanding is the increment stops June 30th.
That's our current directive, yes.
So that means whenever you get the sales tax, I guess it'd be August because it'd be July, wherever you get July sales, like I said, would be August.
It'd be September.
September.
So by then, we, we should definitely be done and well clear.
But if for some reason we're not, that money is going to go through the general, our agreement is, is going to go to the general fund. We're going to stop the sales tax increment to the TIF fund in July. Even if we have our eyes crossed our t's, come some agreements, we're still working on some stuff. The money part of it is what.
Legally, I think the increment would continue. But if, once the agreement is signed and approved by the parties, you go back to that July one day and make a transfer back to the general fund of whatever was collected.
So even if we did stick it into the TIF fund, because we weren't sure, it would be, we wouldn't be spending it.
Right.
We would retroactively.
Once those agreements are finalized, we can.
We would true it up at some point. Because that's, that's a big thing for me. If we're going to end it June 30th, I'm not that concerned when the agreements get signed. I am concerned about when the funding stops. Because I think most people, you know, say, end the TIF, balance the budget. It's never, end the TIF, get the road projects done, get this project. It's always about the money part of the TIF. And if the allocation part of it stops, I think that's a big factor for most, what I'm hearing from people is that that's the biggest.
Well, and I, I'm not looking to drag this out.
Right.
I'd like to be able to work on some other things. So, I mean, as soon as it can get done, it will be done.
There's 20 of them, and one of you understands.
Not quite 20.
You got associates.
Yeah. So you happy to answer any other questions?
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Bearman.
You remind me of a couple of things. What was the original price per square foot of the U T C land that, for purchase?
Yes. Two acres donated up to, let's see, two additional acres, I think, two or two and a half at $5 a square foot, and then an additional eight acres at 550 a square foot. That, that was from the last development agreement.
Okay. 1.5 acres.
1.5, and then eight acres at 550.
So I'm trying to do some quick math here. And what was the value of the Lifestyle, Lifestyle Center penalty?
It's about $8 million.
And so we were looking at a reduced incentive of, what, four and a half million-ish?
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
Well, three and a half to four, I don't know how it shakes out.
I'm just trying to do some quick math here to see kind of how it all shakes out. Because my concern is that even with the $2 million construction supplement, and even with the Norman Public Schools Fund, they're still getting a cultural facility at no cost to them. If we build the Norman Forward projects out there, that will be considered kind of taking the place of, it brings the same value to that area as a cultural facility would. They get out of an $8 million clawback, they still leave an incentive in place.
But that's for the lifestyle.
And they're only paying two and a half million, I guess, would be, right? Would they would be covering the construction supplement and the Norman Public Schools benefit?
No, no.
No?
Just the land.
The land's donated, though.
The land's donated. Yeah, I mean, this is the essence of compromise. It's not pretty for everyone. There are things we don't like, there are things they don't like. But we're ending it early and trying to meet that goal of council. So it's not an easy negotiation.
Yeah, it seems like...
But they're getting the culture, I mean, they're getting the Lifestyle Center incentive, not the Cultural City.
No.
No, but they're still getting cultural facilities that bring the same draw to the area without actually having to build anything.
Not the same draw.
One could argue that heads in beds and heads in restaurants are the same, no matter where they're coming from, no matter what else they're doing in town. So, but, so, I mean, I, this is a, this is a start. I still don't like a whole heck of a lot of it. And I want, I'm curious as to what you think we have the potential liability for in a lawsuit.
I think our biggest issue is with UTC and the Lifestyle Center incentives. I think that's what they would really hang their hat on. Their argument is they were counting on the benefit of all of it. But the direct benefit of any of these project categories, the strongest argument for that is the Lifestyle Center incentives.
Which, yeah. Which, you know, they've certainly still got time to comply with that. But we also therefore then have time to come up with that money. If they decide to put a shovel in the ground, then that's a pretty good sense to us that we need to be figuring out where that incentive money is gonna be. So...
Well, and we'll have all of this on hand from revenue collections through June 30th. So if we were to unwind the TIF without an agreement like this and they came forward with a proposal for the full eight and a quarter million and we didn't have that money. Let's say we use what, what we have on hand to refund back to the general fund or to do traffic and roadway improvements or something. That's where our risk is, is, is we would have to find another way to fund a request like that.
So it seems to me the threat of the lawsuit isn't right now. It would be if they come forward with a proposal and we don't have the money to offer as an incentive for that proposal.
That would be my argument. I think there are other arguments to be made that would say, you know, enter into a, ask the court to restrain us from being able to do anything with that funding. And that's our real issue because we need those funds for some of these other project costs.
And at what point do they become eligible for that? When the shovel goes in the ground? When it's up and running?
They'll have to come with a proposal that shows they can meet all of these criteria. And so they would have to have a, at a minimum, the purchase agreement for the land or a signed lease for three years.
I mean, under the original agreement.
Oh, under the original.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it, I don't think it really sets out when. You just have to be able to show you're meeting those criteria. So that was a lower sales per square foot. Yeah, I think it was two of the three. So you had to meet the sales per square foot. It couldn't be located within Norman or it couldn't be located in a 21-mile radius, which got you right up to Penn Square Mall.
Do I have the approval, though?
Okay, well, I mean, like I said, this is, this is a start. I still feel in my quick math that I don't really feel like we're getting enough. I don't, this is certainly, this is, I mean, a decent starting point. But I'm, I've never been so concerned with the threat of a lawsuit. And, you know, I don't like the precedent that this sets for anyone to just say, oh, well, lawsuit. Guess we can't do something now, or guess you can't pass that, or guess you should go a different direction. So it's a start and I appreciate your work on it. I know you're outgunned on this. You know, it's hard, hard when they can throw as many lawyers at it as they want. And I think it's a start, but I, I've been concerned that this has become increasingly complicated as we move forward with it and I still have those concerns. I don't like the thought of a supplement to one part of the Norman Forward budget that we weren't able to give, NYSA is an example, for their indoor soccer facility. So...
Yeah, and so, if I may, that, that's something that Anthony and I have debated too. The, the problem is what, what else can we get from this? And that's not a problem, but that's what else we need to identify. If it's not that, then what else? Because then we have more funding available and guess what they're gonna want it for, you know?
Right.
So that's, I'm trying to get as much for us as we can out of the deal.
It makes it kind of hard to negotiate something like this. And frankly, I think this is pretty damn good negotiations. It makes it really hard when the council comes out and says, we want this done exactly by this time and don't give us any excuses. That puts you in a pretty difficult negotiating position. Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. So, thank you for your time and effort on this. I know it's been, you have other things to work on. I have a question about the site. So for Norman Forward, we've kind of directed that this is the direction we're moving in. I'm wondering if the MOU has not been completed by June 30th. It says that the, you said earlier that everything that's been discussed can be adopted and like the increment would end and then people would just sign paperwork afterward. Is that correct?
It would be adopted after June 30th but made effective on June 30th.
Okay. And then, so with, as far as the sites go for the Norman Forward projects, when would we move forward on developing the, those projects? As far, could we start doing that immediately?
We've got interviews with design firms in mid-June. And, and the way we bid it out, because we didn't know whether the three projects would be together or not, is for senior center, recreation facility, or multi-sport and the indoor aquatic facility. And so they're gonna be doing those interviews in a couple of weeks. And we can select a firm and move forward with design.
Okay. Would it be, I mean, I feel like we're most likely moving forward with the site. It's in our agreement here. They're donating. And I also, I guess I had a question, just so I understand. The 12 acres now that they're donating in the UTC area? So is the 12 acres basically us forgiving for the clawback? So they wouldn't, okay.
Right.
And so does that addition to the two acres that was originally?
No, that's a total. That's, so the advantage to that site is, it's my understanding that Atrium Hospitality, that owns Embassy Suites now, has expressed a willingness to share some parking in that back part of their lot that's not used unless they have really large events. And so that would be a great place for overflow parking and that would shrink down what we need, you know, on the busiest day scenario.
Sure. So then they donate the land. And what is that land worth? I know that there were some numbers that Councilwoman Bearman was putting together.
Back in 2014, I think, is when the amendment to development agreement number five was passed. They agreed to sell it to us below market. And so that's what those prices were. Some of those obligations, I think, have expired or are near expiration. But the market out there, I'm, I'm guessing I've seen $7 to $10 a square foot, depending on the property. Some of that commercial has gone really high. They have another sale going through in the next couple of months that I think is gonna knock that up even more.
Okay, so they're donating that. And so we meet with firms or they're interviewing firms to start working on designs for those projects. Say this is, you know, everything goes super smooth and we sign the MOU on June 30th. Then, so how, what is the timeline on developing those projects? And then it sounds like we'll start getting, we'll see the TIF funds back in the general fund by September?
Yeah.
So that's a two-part question, but...
Yeah, so I think we're thinking the design can be awarded to the, to a firm immediately and just have them move forward with the senior center first. And then once that land site is finalized, then they could be authorized to move forward with the design of the other two projects. And so, as soon as we get that finalized, I think we can start moving forward with that piece once we have the firm selected.
Once we get the MOU finalized?
Once we have the, the design firm selected and then the land purchase or donation, wherever we end up finalized, I think we can move forward.
So Catherine, I was also asked to mention, I had a question before we started about the ad hoc committees, because we don't have the ad hoc committees yet appointed for aquatics and multi-sport. We've, we've got a list of names and I'll, I'll get with Judd. And I'm thinking within the next month, we could get that done in June, I think. And I need to get the names out to the council so they can weigh in.
That's great. The last meeting in June would be good timing. It could be by that time or maybe the first meeting in July, we would bring a contract for those services to council. I don't know if it would be right after that contract was approved and we would want to, you know, begin to be an ad hoc group. So, end of June would be good timing.
Okay. They've been waiting a long time. Okay. Thank you, Kate.
I have a question, sorry.
Okay.
On your last slide, it says the MOU automatically terminates on June 30th, 2019. Are we gonna be comfortable with it expiring and you continuing to negotiate and work to get these agreements done?
I think we would want an extension, a formal extension, if, if that's necessary. It's, I've already sent out an email to the statutory TIF committee asking for dates the next couple of weeks. That's when I'm hoping to have it in front of them. So I think it'll be in the process by June 30th, but I would want a formal extension, if, if that's possible.
And part of why the request was for this public meeting was we have, we've already had the first deadline in the MOU, which was May 15th, to have the amended project plan and we don't have that complete, right?
Right.
And, as I told you before, Catherine, I know that you're doing a great job, you and your whole staff, and are working, doing yeoman's work to try to get this done. And so, and I very much appreciate that. But I do think that it's important that the public's aware of the deadlines of the MOU. The other deadline was the May 30th one, to have the other agreements completed. And I'm assuming those aren't gonna be done by May 30th because the project plan's not done.
Right.
So it seems highly unlikely at this point that all of this is gonna be done by June 30th.
I think it'll be in process. I mean, I think we'll have a statutory review committee before June 30th. I don't think it will, we'll be able to get through the public hearings and do all of that by June 30th at this point.
Well, is it necessary to extend the MOU?
I mean, I, I'll keep working on it as long as I can. I think if it's already in the pipeline, you know, once the statutory review committee reviews it, it has to come back to council. And so that would certainly set up the timeline for it to come back to you all for a review and a vote.
Well, it's just been my experience that with attorneys, deadlines and scheduling orders are an important thing to make things a priority. And so I'm just concerned that since we're missing these deadlines, and, and I'm referring to the outside paid private attorneys, not you guys on staff. You have enough of us breathing down your neck, so to speak, on, on issues. That without, with deadlines now having passed and being almost without any kind of, you know, anything to hold people's feet to the fire, that things can easily drag out. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm just concerned about that. And, you know, you had, we had those, those dates, I know were important to some people. When we were talking about the MOU, I remember May, March 26th, when we voted on it, we all said, May 15th would be the one we know where we're at. We see this amended project plan, it would be the roadmap to, you know, ending this thing. You know, and we've been, you know, we've, we've had things that were negotiated that ended up dragging on for years. I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen here. It just concerns me. We're talking about, you know, either extending the MOU because, because I think, you know, I don't know what that will look like, what kind of new deadlines we would have. At the same time, you know, I was never one who thought we needed the MOU. I thought we could have just done a resolution in February and said, staff, go get this done. We could have started 45 minutes earlier, maybe be closer to being done. So I, I'm not sure if the MOU is, is really ever necessary now that we aren't meeting the deadlines. Part of the reason why I thought the MOU could end up being helpful was to have deadlines. And so, I mean, is, you know, if we ended up terminating the MOU and just said, go finish negotiating this and said that we're, that we're gonna end the increment collection effective June 30th, wouldn't that be the same net effect? Because we don't, because the only deadlines left in the MOU now is June 30th.
Yeah, and it will expire on June 30th. No need to terminate. The termination clause says, I think, if, if reasonable parties agree that, you know, you're not getting anywhere. It's not the best thing to do there, but...
If we don't have, let me ask you this. Let's say the next council meeting is June 11th, which is almost 30 days after the May 15th. If we don't have amended project planned by then, would you think that we're at enough of an impasse and we're falling enough, falling, falling, falling enough behind? That we should just terminate the MOU and negotiate as best we can to end it? But council, take matters into their own hands and say that the increment collection is ending June 30th? And, you know, and that we, we want you guys to still negotiate it? But we go ahead and end the increment collection effective June 30th? And, and then take whatever time is needed to paper up the rest of the deals?
I mean, that's, we could do that.
I mean, June 11th would be almost a month after the deadline, right?
Yeah, and I certainly would hope that we would have some final resolution, at least on terms by then, but...
I do too. And, I mean, but I know, it's like, like I've told people who've asked me about the status of negotiations, it takes two to tango. You know, one side can be all ready to negotiate and, and ready to, you know, get things done. But it's like dancing, it's hard to dance by yourself when you can, but... I don't know. I mean, I, I would like for the council to be prepared if come June 11th, we don't have an amended project plan, which was due on May 15th, that we could take action. Whether that's a resolution, an ordinance. And if we choose to table it at the June 11th meeting, fine, to the last meeting in, in June. But it sounds to me like we're, you know, everybody who's sitting here is gonna probably be asked to vote to extend the MOU and people are gonna have to decide, are they going to do that or not? And, you know, I think I've heard some strong comments from council members about that position and maybe, you know, things may change by the time we get to that point, depending upon where discussions are at that point in time. But it's also, a resolution in February essentially could get, could get us to the same point we're at right now if we're not gonna have deadlines.
So... We can certainly do that. See where we are and if we need to do that, then we can do a resolution.
Because I think it's important that the people you're negotiating with know that we're serious.
Yeah.
You know, and that these important, these deadlines were important. I mean, they were important part of that MOU negotiation. And when, you know, when you miss deadlines at the courthouse, there's, you know, the judges don't take very kindly to that. And for lack of a better expression, if we as council are the judges, is the people who approve that MOU, I mean, I took those deadlines very importantly. I had them marked on my calendar.
Me too.
Councilmember Scott.
Can you kind of briefly to describe what the implications would be if we don't extend the MOU? If it just expires on June 30th? And then, you know, say we end the increment, but what does that mean for the projects? Can you kind of explain that to me?
If we end the increment and we, we don't have any resolution, you know, I think it depends on what signal we're trying to send. If we're, if we're letting the MOU expire or ending the MOU but saying, keep working on it, that's one thing. If it's in, in the MOU and let's go ahead and repeal the increment, that's another thing. And that brings up some of the things we've talked about in executive sessions, about that possible litigation and, and the risk associated with that. I would fully expect a petition to be filed and, and council for the other side to try and get those funds frozen. counsel for the other side to try and get those funds frozen so that we can't spend them.
Okay.
You know, whether or not they're successful in the long term, I don't know. I think we have some pretty good arguments, but it could definitely mess up our timing for some of these projects. The UTC donation, I think, would be off the table, of course. So, that's something we would need to think about as we get closer to that. But I can certainly prepare something for June eleventh. You know, hopefully, it'll be a project plan amendment I can bring to you all. But if not, we can prepare a resolution ending, or an ordinance ending the increment June thirtieth.
Okay, I'm thinking we are just about out of time. If the council has any time to get a bite to eat, unless you can do your presentation in five minutes, Sean.
We are happy to move to next week.
Okay.
We did want to thank our two speaking negotiators with the minutes. I wanted to thank Trish Glenn back in Cognito and the cat back there. We're coming. And also Kevin Volcay, you hear from Embar, who's been patiently waiting and been working very much. Thanks for having me, brother. Thank you for being here. We'll do this again next week if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
Yeah, we'll do it first.
We'd, we'd rather, we'd rather spend the time we need to spend on it than...
I'll wait here if you wish.
You don't have to wait, you can come back next week. Thank you.
Yeah, right.
Meeting adjourned.